...rise from the fudge for you. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. We are going to begin this evening by, I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed agreement between Madison Board of Education and the Madison Education Association effective July 1st, 2019 to June 3rd, of '22. To discuss the status of the Teamsters.
So move.
Second.
Okay. We'll be right back.
I guess we know.
Yeah. Yep. Be right back. And you might want to bring your, um... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, Kathy.
This has happened many times in the past. I just sit here. They just enter executive session and they scream out, "Jeez." They don't want to do that.
And I, I work. I'm filming that period.
Oh my god, you can see me. I literally spent every time just like drawing.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, you can't see me usually. I do almost see you sometimes, but...
The desk is too low for me, so I'm so uncultured. That was like a reference a long ago when like the students were like, "Okay, we'll just, just let them speak for a little."
Yeah, okay.
It's not, it's not incredibly helpful. Oh, no, no, there's a lot more than that. Yeah, we did them every week. This is terrible. Typically, they're like a page and a half. They've got a lot today. I'm gonna try to dip out a few if I can.
It's been a long day. It's okay though, because we have, I don't know if we have some people that say, "But, you know." I wasn't here last time. I like, I don't know, because I wasn't here last time because of that. Did Tech Week the last time they met?
There was another time, so, during finals. That's okay though, because me and Jackie haven't shown up either of those weeks. I think they assume we're all busy.
I didn't know that there was a different time they came. I knew that there was one during Tech Week and I emailed them, "I can't, just like, I can't get to be there, so..."
There's only two people that watched that video.
It's me and then some really in education, I'm like, "Oh, I wonder if this is like, everybody's scheduled, but it's been cut, you know?" We'll just... What is it? What is it like?
I don't even know what this means. I haven't been here the last two weeks, so probably would not.
They have their secret envelopes and they go everywhere.
There was this woman that was here last year. She was here at the beginning this year. She basically like just called them all out as soon as she could. That was the funniest thing.
You and Jackie, I remember this, it was weird when she was talking. Interesting, like, that was an interesting one, she basically was like, I think she actually used the word dictatorship, it's like, "Duke of Education." That was a, that was a funny little, actually. I was like, "Skiffy."
I've only spoke out against them once. I changed something and I felt really awkward doing it. I've never done it again. I was just like, "I do not like this change." And then they're like, "Okay." And nothing happened at that point. That was last year, that was like, I literally was just like, "No one."
Who was the person, like, the other representative of last year?
Emily Baker.
I kind of remember that, because I came here. What's his face, Liam?
That kid was kind of...
The guy who's doing this like, for me. He had to like show me how to do it. And I came here for one, twenty minutes, like, the one, one of the longest meetings ever.
One time it went to like 11:30.
Yeah, and I think it was that one, it went to like 10:30. One time I was here and it was like 10:30 and Mr. Spears was just like, "I can do this, it's okay."
Did Mr. A like just ask you to do this?
Um, he asked our class if there was anyone who was interested and I basically was like, "There's a couple of people," and he was like, "All right, well, tell, I'll pass your name to Salit Terry," and the guy was talking about it. And so then I just was like, it was like on a Friday and then I went in the morning and I was like, "Hey, can I talk to Salit Terry about something?" And they were like, "Sure." And so I was like, "Hey, can I do this?" And he was like, "Okay." You're the first person who asked her, so, yeah.
You wanted to do that?
Yeah.
You get paid? How much you get paid? Oh, really? Damn, I wish I got paid. I just sit there.
Yeah. I'm not like, it's also a fun design enough. Because like, once every two weeks, I have an excuse to stop doing what I'm doing. I mean, like, I'm filming, so it's something, you know? But, yeah, I wouldn't do this.
This is just terrible, though. This is absolutely terrible. Whenever they have a policy that a woman proposes, that never goes well.
That was just, that's a third reading of the institute's...
They like to repeat them seamlessly. This is terrible, too. I mean, hopefully these are all just, they just vote and they don't discuss.
Well, that one they're gonna discuss, because it's curriculum.
They don't give you this?
No. I just kind of come in here and they're just like, "Right, okay, and, um, you're here, don't know, let's go in." You can take Jackie's in a second if you really wanted to, because she's not here. Most likely is not coming, so I'll just look.
Jackie's not coming.
She comes like maybe half the time.
Yeah, no, she says she's not coming. We have to meet with Salit Terry before each of these.
Those are all the things you have to mention?
Yeah. Swimming girls got a championship.
Impressive.
Boys soccer got a championship. I, I don't know any of these things. Salit Terry, I've already heard of these things, I'm like, "Oh, okay."
How about those sports? Yes, the sports.
The funniest thing is like, these people are like, to get this position, you're supposed to know what's going on. You're gonna meet Jackie, "What's going on?"
Yeah, well, I feel like, I mean, I applied for this and I figured that when you did it, because like you came in and you were like, "What do you think of the curriculum changes or not necessarily that we're doing?" What do you think about this? You know, it's just, tell us what the students are up to. Tell us about the close.
We had to go to an education summit, the school paid for it, me and Jackie, a week ago, and that was the worst thing I've ever been to.
How long was it?
It was like close to like seven hours. And I, so at one point, we had to split up and go to meetings and like this one, like, it was about like education, like ways of grading. I thought they were gonna talk about standard space grading. It was just like this woman talking about how her school district just sucks and like no one does anything. And I fell asleep, I straight up just passed out in there. And I was surrounded by like all these old people, they're like, "Why the hell is there a young kid here?" So that, that was a time.
Where was it? Was it like in...
It was like in Adam Maria in Groton. It, that was just all old people, they're just like, "I love Connecticut education." And like, so the only reason we were there was for this two-hour meeting where this like woman and like seven other kids showed up. And she's like, "Where do you go for the board event? What town are you from? What is it like? What do you do there?" And then she's like, "You guys, the conclusion is, you guys need to contribute more to the board." And like Jackie literally mentions like, "They don't let us do anything." And then she's like, "You need to ask if you can do things." So I'm just like, "Wow."
They didn't listen when there was a referendum, a heated debate, or legal donors. We, when we voted, we were adults, I feel like they're not supposed to vote. We didn't represent us. Like everyone in the town was like, "We feel like we should not do the schools this way." And then they were like, "That's too bad."
Oh, they still, they, yeah, they're still closed. I'm in. That school's a nightmare. You went there, right?
Yeah, I did, I went there for two years, so...
For two years?
I moved to third grade, so...
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, four years there, that was definitely...
There are a few teachers, I, there are a few very questionable things. I just had one teacher as a reading specialist who yelled at Keith, "Sherry." Remember how you had a rock box in some sandbox? There was like that box, and just like...
I totally don't remember that.
Gravel? There's like, there's a box of gravel that looks like an old sandbox, but it's filled with gravel, you know, the playgrounds? And the reading specialist came out and yelled at Keith because she's kicking rocks at another kid. And I was also kicking rocks. And I've been back there and tried to...
I just remember like the bestest coming down from the ceiling. My youngest sister's going there right now, in her last year of school. And like, I just feel bad for her because they don't have like, apparently temperatures got like above ninety.
Yeah.
Like at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I don't know, I still think it's called Polsen. Because I just, maybe it's just because I remember it.
No, Polsen was bad.
Polsen?
Polsen...
The teachers there also... They take, they, they can't...
I think that I could just, I don't know. At Polsen, I think it's just like, uh, who the hell is Mr. Henderson like? Oh, I'll just keep them all. Only friends.
Yeah. I remember me teaching teachers up, you know, looking at the reading special. My science teacher in the eighth grade spelled moon girl. Andrew and I were the same, that's for real, I said she spelled moon girl. We also took a quiz and she left, the answer was almost a smart one. Like while we were doing quizzes, and the smart ones all, I said, "That was a nice one."
I just remember seventh grade, not a single teacher unlike me. And I think that was just weird for me, because like all of them, like, really... Because I kind of just interjected around and ignored them apparently, apparently, questions. I had, I had those in my order, too.
She was actually a decent teacher. And then I went to the sister in the fifth grade and she also told us a story about how she, you know those dog brushes that like shave, like, little hair pills? She took one of those, she happened to get this, she took one of those one time and she looked like yours, because she had this regular brush, and she was brushing her back, and she shaved like this. And she was still, she taught like that for like a year, so for chat with me, because she just was not as smart as playing shoes. No, we didn't. Also, I remember the nails kind of, like, if you look up, there's just nails hanging out the ceiling. She used to have head kicks and the colors went in sometimes, because it was just pretty easy.
Yeah, I remember that, just... Yeah, I totally, like, there's been plenty of times where I totally understand what's going on. I wish they'd just asked. Because they do not, I mean, I can interject, but it just, it pisses some of them off.
Yeah, that's true.
You know that that guy's Rebecca Colly's dad? That little guy? Galen Colly?
Are you curious?
Oh, it was, I like, I just thought about it. It's like he mentioned it once, and I'm just like, "My lord."
Yeah, that's crazy, she, I feel like, there's just a few times where I feel like, they do pull students come in. Were you, the first time I was here, was the end of last year, and then students come in with Madison Theory Services and give a presentation on like drugs, alcohol, and depression.
I missed that meeting, yeah. Oh, you know what, you know what was the best? When the kids that did the, uh, the personal elective came and Sarah talked about her film for thirty minutes.
When was that, last time?
Last year, she did that for a whole session. And I honestly like... That was not a time. Because like, Stod's just explaining what the independent elective is, and some of them were kind of interesting, like, "I did this." And Sarah's like, "I'm making a movie." Talking all about the movie, I was just like...
She's, uh, the night of the musical meeting, she is like, has like a film, like a showing in school.
It's apparently like twenty minutes.
Yes.
She spent all that time in twenty minutes? Yeah, no, I'm following that. I follow that and then I'll screenshot it and send it to Andrew, and then Andrew will just be like, "Why? Why didn't I sneak this?"
Screaming in, doesn't exist, oh, I guess it's there.
Yeah, that is the day of the musical.
I thought it was like at the same time for whatever reason, but, yeah, I...
I kind of want to go with Andrew to see that. That'd just be a bad idea.
Kate was like part of it for a while, so I know somewhat like the premise, but it doesn't make sense. Like, I've also heard it's like, Kate had to...
She apparently showed it in like Kyra's class.
Because Jacob was in the class and I think Kate was in the class.
Yeah, and Kyra said it was just like the worst thing she's ever seen. I, like, I don't know.
Yes, it's Kate, it talks to Kate about it. It's just Kate in the class, talking about it. I'm just like, "It doesn't make sense." Like, it just doesn't make sense. Apparently, then Jacob was asking her questions about it.
Jacob totally would ask some stupid question, make it seem important.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. Something like that. It's barely, like, sense, it just doesn't make sense. There's, yeah, there's Kate working on it from, and she used to, she like was part of it, because for some reason she's so good, she talks to her. Which I just, no, don't understand.
I was like Mario.
Oh, Mario's in it, I think also Matt Belli was in it.
Sorry. Literally, there's two people in the school that make me rage, she's one of them.
She used the phrase sexually omnipotent during her presentations, I was like, "What are you even talking about?"
You saw that presentation, right? That, oh my god. I should have recorded that, no. No one understood what she was going on about.
But it wasn't great because it's not... It was still... Mrs. Fike, though.
And she's like, "Look at this Russian film." And it's like, "I don't even know what the hell we're watching."
I went to the back, five minutes, I did the presentation and I keep that... Presenting, I was like, "This is supposed to be a thinking event for you." It's like Curry Claire, you know, kicking from the top, and she was just like...
I think Claire was low-key raging.
Yeah.
Definitely. Like, I just like, because I remember I heard her once, she's like, "Why don't you don't do that," or something. Like, she said that, because like she's, I don't know what if, what I'd do if I get assigned with her.
Yeah, I also had, like, their presentation was like eight essays, like each of the poster boards like had an essay on the front, it had an essay on the back, and it was like eight pages of that. And it was each about a different movie. I'm like, "My costume presentation is kind of cracking, but I could talk." I didn't mean to...
I had to see it, which one was it?
For what reason? It was me, Sarah, and then Anderson, and for whatever reason, the serial box is kind of, kind of, which like, showed effort, so it was fine. If you see it, if you go in this room, I love the serial box that I made in this room, and she sets like, I art, I presented a serial box, and I, this is more instruction, which is, yeah. I mean, that presentation, I just...
I, I, I've never seen a worse presentation.
She always talks in this, like, pretentious, but she's, it doesn't make sense, but it's like eight pages, okay? It's the, she's, she's, she's so, and so, it's so short, she, it's, it's, that's the better, she wants to, now, what's she doing there? She's, she's, I actually, yes, she's, it's just, no, just a... I never had an issue with her, and then she, she got into that, she was really...
Wait a minute.
Which is just...
I don't, I don't even know. She kind of came in clutch last year, I mean, she obviously had a whole unit last year and said like, "Katie, I just did not know what the fuck I was doing it." And he kept having me sit next to her for some reason, I'm just like, "Can you give me the answers?"
What unit was it?
I don't even know.
I have girls, that's true. My classroom had twelve people in it and I would think like...
Is this recording?
Yeah, but it doesn't mess, because, so if you talk to her, your cord is from the microphone, and you're talking, it basically doesn't...
I'm listening to my client.
So it's kind of unfortunate, and you're trying to talk, because it basically doesn't pick up, because they're talking to you there, but there's no way to get the microphone. I guess I could try, yeah, microphone, but during them, I think...
I'm straight up after my report, I'm just gonna leave. I used to like just ask, I like wait for someone, but I think I'm just gonna leave. They've spent enough time.
So, I think probably what we're watching would be like...
Real world.
Oh, I know. Yeah, these classes just... I have like my first three, because I had three years plus, I did my first three periods this year, and then it's just like a French macro, and then...
Yeah, yeah. Oh, my gosh, I loved that. I did, too. That's what we get, should be a picture.
He's kind of tough, because I like, and I got an A, so... Certain structures, she loses, what's happening, broken, this is her food. If he, I feel like he likes, he's been in a, I can only give him the...
Oh, yeah, you're right. It's only a... God, I... I just heard someone, Patrick's conversation with her in the grading.
So like, all she does, that's, is...
There are three girls. She said everything.
She kept doing, she kept doing, she said like, "One work is shared sometimes," and then she put down, because she was, it was like...
She was complaining about some stupid foreign film sites closing, she's like, "Did you hear this?" And every, she's like...
No, we actually didn't, please, that's good.
She's like, "It's outrageous, this foreign film site's closing, that you can watch foreign films for free." Or like certain, it's not even like, it's like a certain niche of foreign film, she's like, "I don't care."
All right, moving on. We have some recognitions this afternoon.
We have three recognitions. We have our postponed American Education Week for our Class Education Association. Our teachers who cannot make it, and yet will be postponed one more time, due to some conflict and some under the weather, which sounds like you are, so I'm gonna screw it a little bit, to my right. And our recognition for our CTE program, which Kentucky Technology Engineering Educates Association has named at Daniel Hand High School CTE program, the program of the year. That's big news, it is a huge recognition, they could not make it either. I mean, it was kind of last minute planning and they want the team to come, they don't want to just send around. That said, we have a couple of friends here, Sue Evans and Carla Marina, who are the co-presidents of the Madison Education, Madison Association of Educational Supportive Services. So MACE is a wide, far-reaching organization. We have our paraprofessionals, we have our support staff in the office, we have our nurses, who am I forgetting? We have...
Technology.
Technology, all of our technology support staff as well, they're all part of MACE. And it's interesting, because when you think of schools, you think of the teacher, the principal, and the relationships that many of our kids develop with our support staff is really quite remarkable. Elementary level, we have an adult in the classroom supporting the teacher, supporting the classroom, that becomes a great opportunity. Then as you go through, kids have opportunities to really connect, especially these kids and so forth. And obviously, our office staff, which is the face, first, you know, face that we get, the welcoming voice, the welcoming, you know, when we come into our building, Sue and Carla are both up at Daniel Hand, and always smiling. You've both been there for, for a little while now, but you've moved to different positions. Yeah, so, but I want, on behalf of the board, on behalf of the district, appreciate the work, really the unspoken work that happens in the background, a lot of folks don't get to see, and appreciate that. Thank you so much for your time. I gave you the floor, I said to, I said, "This is your time for your speech now."
Yeah. I only have one thing to say. I've always looked at our organization like columns in foundation on a building. You can't do without those columns holding up the building. You may not notice them, but they're holding up the building. But I'd say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for holding up our building.
Thank you for coming tonight. And again, for all the work that we do, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us, yes.
Yeah, now you can, get while the getting's good.
Thank you.
Any member of the public that would like to speak? Student representative, please.
Hi. So for the past two weeks, you probably noticed, me and Jackie haven't been here, so I'm gonna talk about why we haven't been here. Two weeks ago, I was in the play during Tech Week and Jackie was doing field hockey, was competing for that. And then last week was finals for trimester one, so we're both studying them. And then today, Jackie can't join us because she is at an all-state banquet for field hockey right now.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna do the report right now. So here's some things we haven't covered that have happened at our school. Our swimming girls team won the championship, as well as the boys' soccer team. And football, they're playing for the state championship this Saturday. And then on top of that, trimester one exams just ended today, trimester two starts tomorrow. The upcoming musical is going to be Newsies at the high school. Winter sports have just started also. And then this Monday at 7:30 PM at the First Congregational Church is going to be our chorus concert. So that's pretty much everything that's one on.
Tomorrow was the chorus concert? Or a week from...
Monday.
Monday, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Now, as a follow-up on Ryan, from our last meeting, you were here, so you were, the salitary principal of the high school, had presented a tool that we introduced to test for illegal substances tomorrow, I have a call, meeting with our students, and we'll be meeting with kids about that, and then we'll be sending out a notification to parents.
We are using that tool?
Yes, that we are, that we will, yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand that that was the optimum, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, superintendent's report.
All right. So the bludgeoning assumptions are third on my list here, but really, these first two presentations, which will be brief... which can be brief, are actually vacant to the budget assumptions. The literacy coach program is something that was presented last year and was eliminated at the end of the budget process and with the understanding that we would include it again, and that is an assumption. And then also in the assumptions, I will spend a couple minutes on the elementary school counseling program, expanding that program. Both of these items were presented to the curriculum committee and student development committee in the U last month or so, yeah. So we did a much more in-depth presentation there. But I'll hand it off to Gail.
Thank you. So I believe all of you have a couple of packets in front of you and you can reference these as we go through this brief presentation, but also it will give you a lot more detailed background about this position. So I'm gonna start out by just reminding you of the work that we've done around the strategic plan and noting that one of our priority objectives is providing the highest quality instruction. And this is directly related to that priority objective. So one of the ways that we do that is through the instructional coaching model. And the purpose of an instructional coach is to actually help teachers to increase their effectiveness in the classroom as instruction is allocated. They use a variety of models in order to do that, and the models are outlined for you in one of those packets that I've left out through C. So there's a total of four different models in order to help teachers grow professionally and to have those professional growth moments impact their classroom performance. This is a very researched model. This is not something unique to Madison. It's actually widely employed in a variety of contents. The model that we're talking about here is a literacy coach, so in particular, we're looking at ELA instructions, K through 12. And Marzano, who's a very recognized researcher, points to instructional coaches in order to improve practice in these five ways. So in your packet, in your design, you will see that one of our coaching models very specifically talks about this cycle. The idea of going into classrooms and visiting classrooms to observe, taking teachers' requests, setting goals to improve instruction, planning together around how to improve that instruction, how to have a greater impact on student learners, and then implement those designs through modeling, co-teaching, and observing each other, and then looking at student work in order to plan and analyze the impact on student learning. So this is an authentic example of coaching in our district. Couple of years back, we had each of our three literacy coaches come with a classroom teacher and specifically talk about their work together and the impact that it had on student learning. So this is an example of that presentation. This is a quote from a Madison teacher, really talking about the idea of improving in any area pushes you into uncomfortable moments, but necessary moments to have. Children, our learners, are changing in response to the curriculum that they're experiencing. They're changing based on all of the growth and development of learners. So each class is unique unto itself. It's not the same techniques, the same moves, the same strategies that I used last year will necessarily be effective on my next class. You have to really know what the students are doing in order to adjust instruction. And I just want to point out the quote down at the bottom. That's really, you know, it's just like athletics. Coaching doesn't stop when you win a game. Coaches move individuals and teams to continuously improve each time they play. And that's why coaches are an ongoing, necessary part of schools. There's also studies on the impact of student learning. Richard Allington does a lot of research around literacy, and he talks about exemplary teachers giving explicit demonstrations of not just how-to, but how they engage cognitively in order to identify what they're reading and the impact of what they're reading. And also the importance of teaching kids within texts that they can actually access and understand. So reading above in order to teach a strategy isn't as effective as teaching a student on their reading level with good comprehension, so then they can grow to the next level. In fact, the study down at the bottom took a look at literacy coaching seen over a three-year period and saw a 32% increase on student... So the coaching need for this proposal really helps to not only grow the model in the true integrity of the model throughout the system, but it also is in response to additional teachers. Added to the instructional change at Daniel Hand High School next year, we will be continuing to revise our curriculum at-hand in English. We also are seeing more teachers that will be new to the grade level and teams as we redistrict. And in grade five, we're seeing a doubling of the literacy block in that grade. So coaching will be a very important part of making sure that all teachers are moving their instruction accordingly. The additional challenge with coaching is that we have different models and schedules in place in every building. So my literacy block in elementary school may not be the same as in Polson, and I also need time to work with teachers. So this is the systemic need that we see coming up. We saw it last year and we stretched our model to include some partial coaching at the high school, but in fact, the high school need is increasing more next year than in here.
So we currently have three, which is what we talked about last year. So how are they allocated? Are they allocated by grade level or by teacher? Like sixteen teachers across all grade levels or is there, I know there's, the high school is shared with Brown?
Brown school, yeah. So right now, you know, ideally, if you're going to use all of the coaching models in the document and be really effective in responding to adult learners, then you're available in a building. You know, you're assigned to a building. That has not been the case. We've been using three coaches. And when we grew to the high school, we have one person that's allocated partially to Brown, partially to the high school. So that's a couple of days a week. And then the other remaining two coaches are covering the rest of the district, which is three elementary schools and Polson. But because high school was new learning, new curriculum, we felt that that was a more intense caseload.
So last year with budget, we said we would revisit this based on the reconfiguration. So with a new, one less school, would it be two at high school, one at high school, one at Polson, one at Brown, one elementary?
Yeah, we haven't quite kind of defined it yet, but the idea is the high school definitely is is in need of a full-time person. In order to really have the impact of coaching and in order to embrace the changes in instruction that are outlined in one of those documents, which is significant, you really need someone who's working there regularly, who you can depend upon to work through some of the rough aspects.
That would be four grades, right, for that person?
For that person.
So could you not do four grades per person or is it too much?
Yeah, it's not as easy as that. So we've done it a couple of different ways. We've tried doing like, person A, you have all of kindergarten and first grade. Well, that and second grade, because you have to sporadically, we've done shared. You've got, if you look at it like I'm a K through two expert, the instructional block could be identical in all three schools.
At the same time, you mean?
Right, yeah. So literacy coaching might be happening in the first thing in the morning in all three of those grades. So there's a content specialist kind of balance with the time that you have available and the planning time for teachers and teams too. So that's why it usually ends up being a mixed bag of schools and grades.
So the ideal, sorry, last question. Is the ideal solution ultimately to have one per building? Or do you, are you still gonna just continue to look at it?
You know, I think we're really matching what we see as need. And just as we've been thoughtful about everything else, we're really being thoughtful about kind of looking at impact and looking at need and really trying to rate fit. I don't know if there's a, you know, kind of that grand idea.
I didn't know if there was a more of a master plan.
Well, linear, like progression of how you see this. No, I think what we are seeing is that, you know, Daniel Hand deserves the same supports that we put in place for change of instruction, that we've seen over and over again, highly successful.
So Gail, does it, so we would have one literacy coach at Daniel Hand? And then would the, and then one at the junior high?
The remaining three coaches would be shared between the remaining four buildings.
Okay, so, alright, because you referenced like someone having a specialty in K through two, for example. So, so there would be someone then potentially who would work with K through two or K through three at the elementary schools and then someone, I'm just trying to understand.
Probably, probably not that.
How the school set works.
Yeah, probably not that clean because of the schedule difference. So you want somebody to be able to be working actively with modeling as well as planning all day long.
They're kind of like sweepers, that they go...
Yeah, so I have to be able to meet not only with the teacher who I'm coaching and the classroom that I'm working directly with, and that's usually on a cycle of like, you know, ideally, you're doing it three to six weeks. Our coaches now are doing it more six to eight week cycles. So that's been a compromise this year based on what we have available. The same thing is true. It's not as clean as saying, "These two buildings are your chief grades" because I want them to be active all day and coaching all day. So sometimes Polson or Brown might have an afternoon literacy block and the elementary schools only have the morning. So I have to make sure classrooms and teachers are available on both ends.
Gail, how do the coaches assess?
Oh, I evaluate them.
Do the teachers have enough to do to provide evaluation?
They give them feedback. Many times they do surveys. I meet with the coaches once a month in each discipline, in language arts and math, and we meet as a department. So I do some ongoing evaluation that way. And then teacher feedback is generally more authentic to the coach themselves because it is a partnership and a trusted relationship. The coaches are giving the teachers feedback, teachers are giving coaches feedback.
And that happens independent and I don't want to say confidential, but independent of the teacher's evaluation that they were to have with their department chair.
I'm the formal evaluation person. Yeah, but a component of their evaluation plan is that they have to give me some degree of survey result as one of their indicators.
So mechanically, how's it work with literacy coaches? Is it a separate field within education that someone has a degree in, a special certificate? Or do you just take somebody who's a really good English teacher and convert them into a coach?
Good question.
And then you lose someone in the classroom who's good? How does it work?
I'd say it's multiple things, but yes, there is a certification requirement. So it is a certain certification that allows you to span all those grades. So that is one of the pieces, one of the requirements, is that your cert tie to be in the area that you're coaching. Another piece though is the validity of being an excellent classroom teacher. So in order to be a respected colleague who's a coach, there's a high degree of trust and also a degree of validity that you have walked the walk and you have talked the talk. So it's a combination of that as well. And I have to say, you have to be super prepared because you're working with multiple classrooms, multiple grade levels, and you're prepping for meeting all of those learners' needs. So you're trying to actually bring all of the science and research of teaching into the classroom every day with every teacher.
Unlike many other professions, we don't really have a career ladders. Most professions will have, you know, mid-level leadership positions and by and large, it's administration and teaching. So this is a kind of a career ladder for some folks and they're happy to be right there. And that's, they don't aspire to be a building administrator, but they want something beyond the classroom still.
That's an A-level certification.
There's also the language arts consultant and the remedial.
Like what we're talking literacy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a follow-up question. So in the, bless you, Laura. In the absence of coaches, what do we do and how do we do it? Just coordinators?
So, you know, you'll see a notation up there is, high school has coordinators. Coordinator's role in Madison is to be evaluation. So evaluation is a different animal than coaching on its side. Degree of risk-taking in an evaluation moment is vastly different than in a coaching moment. And your other part of your question was, I'm sorry.
So I get, I assume, alright, we have coaches now in the high school, but, or I mean coordinators now in the high school. So in the absence of a coach, if we didn't have a coach, we would have?
We have professional development days that are dedicated to professional growth. But the application, what coaches do is I, every month I meet with them because every month I want to see the fruition of professional development in the classroom, see what the experiences are, see what the rough spots are, and see as a system what that helps us to understand in terms of informing the curriculum. You'll see some adjustments that are on your agenda tonight, in large part due to those discussions. But it's, it's not looking just at the surface level of what instruction is supposed to look like, the curriculum, it's what it actually looks like and how we can help every teacher to improve their professional practice ongoing.
And so qualitatively, I would imagine that coaches can help to overcome the age-old problem, which may not exist in our district openly, of teachers who kind of get set in their ways and they have the same test that they give year in and year out. They never change their curriculum and all of that.
There's, there's no doubt that they create a responsiveness of the curriculum to what we're seeing. Another piece that we have isolated that we're working on is looking at embedding some real skill sets around grammar acquisition at every grade level. So that's something I'm working with my coaches on and will be bringing something forward to the board. I think it is also really profound to note that, that initial slide that I showed you around the strategic plan of our goal of providing the highest quality instruction. So behind that objective, there is measurements of what we see. So we do have indicators that tell us how we're progressing and not.
And then one last question.
Just your comment about the curriculum. So in complex organizations, you need to have a systemic approach to things. And in that regard, what may be perceived as a certainly plateauing professional practice, or in some districts, we don't pay attention to what kids learn, the formal name is curriculum. I can see that to be the case. Here, on the other hand, we've invested a ton of resources in my time here, I know, and I actually adopted a board policy on the non-negotiable nature of implementing the board-adoption curriculum. That part, I just went to the Polson Leadership Team today for an hour, had a wonderful meeting. That part's not in question. The part that's in question is not what we teach, it's how well we teach it. And we can always pursue higher levels of quality in how well we teach. This happens to be not only research-based, but I don't need research, but we can see with our own eyes, the most effective strategy that we've used, and I mean strategy in the broad sense, strategy, to move the district forward. And we've seen it in NAC and L.A. And what we've witnessed at the high school is a very traditional, you know, longstanding approach that trying to move practice and innovative without this kind of support is challenging and the reflexive nature is to blame a teacher. And I feel that's highly, really unfair because if we provide these supports, you will see the innovation that we're looking for.
And has, have there been any internal studies done in our district about how our students respond when our teachers are getting coaching?
You know, I think the best response that I can see from the students is in their work. And the idea that we're having to recalibrate ongoing based on their performance to really think about what they're asking us for their next level of work. I don't know if that makes sense, but when you look down at what kids are doing in fifth grade this year and what kids are doing in fifth grade next year and kids are doing the year after that, it requires us to change our instruction each and every year.
So I was at Ryerson yesterday. I spent about two hours in classrooms there. And in the fourth grade, fourth graders were doing literary essays. That is an incredibly challenging task for our fourth graders. We make it developmentally appropriate. But without the necessary training, we wouldn't see the performance levels. You know, when we were in the classrooms and listening to student comments about what is in a literary essay and now show me your literary essay to show evidence of that, I was blown away because three, four years ago, it wasn't... I, I was blown away because three, four years ago, it wasn't nearly to the depth that it is right now. That's because kids came up from K to three with, I think, a much, much richer experience in language arts, but also the repertoire that our teachers have to, to teach that content.
Well, and then that actually just leads to another concept. I know that coaches are not intended to be like special ed teachers, like to teach how to teach special ed. But I know that like with our math bridges and other things that we've done where we try to, modern education, we try to reach kids in different ways with this, with varying the lesson to different learning styles. Does coaching help with that on the English side?
That's a critical role, a critical role, yeah.
I mean, the idea is that you're meeting the needs of every learner in your classroom, which is a very lofty goal for every teacher. Coaches make sure that they're being an outside look at how well are we doing that, not only individually but collectively, but also working as a system to support that goal.
Metaphorically, think of a file drawer. You pull it out and the more tools you have, the more files you have in that drawer. And that's part of the job of the coach is to pile up that drawer so I can pull out more tools to reach kids.
So if this goes through, budget gets approved, is this a post-it shop or have we had someone, do we have someone identified from, I feel like our other coaches have been identified from Lincoln mostly, right?
They've always been.
They've been internal, but they're all posted, yeah.
They're all posted.
They all go through a process.
And then they already have the certification when they?
To the farthest requirements of applying.
Yeah, okay.
Or anticipated by the beginning of the year. We tend to post internally for a position like this just to start, and if we don't have a wide enough net to cast, then we go outside.
Thank you. Okay. And the second.
It's been a nice.
So what I have here is the presentation that we provided to the Curriculum and Student Development Committee. Rachel Killian, Eliza Hayes, your councilman, Brown, and Jen Hawley is the program coordinator for our counselors. Right now, what we have is, we have a lot of folks that are helping in mental health services in our district. We have three certified commissioners that help, both are school counselors, those are traditional guidance counselors, school psychologists also, and school social workers. In addition, we host nativity with the family services counselors, is a part of an arrangement that's been around for quite some time now. And then we have clinical staff for our most acute cases in our ESS program. Do you guys feel familiar to you? We did this presentation for about 45 minutes back in October, social emotional learning. The question we asked is, you know, how do we take assistance approach in fostering this social emotional learning for all of our students? And we talked about obviously training our staff, went through a number of different things that we do to train our staff. We also have curriculum that is developed, is in place, or will be developed over time as well as curriculum. We have tiered support. So we have things that we do with tier one for all kids, tier two for some kids who need some extra supports, and tier three for our most acute cases. And then finally, we have some targeted programming. What we're going to focus in, what happened?
No, that's going to ruin.
Well, we're going to focus inside of these two areas right here. This role that we believe a void is being filled will address specifically around curriculum development and around tiered support, particularly the tier one, what are we providing for all kids? In that curriculum development cycle, the wellness cycle, which includes PE, health and guidance, as you mentioned, we have a guiding document right now that is K-12 that talks about specific outcomes of what we expect students to be able to know and do over the course of 13 years here. We have that curriculum, that approach falls into what we call tier one, which is the core program for all kids. So it's our wellness approach for all kids. We also have some supportive groups and advisory groups that go along with that. We mentioned the PAW group before with the high school. And then responsive classroom is our core program that we provide social emotional direct instruction at the K through eight level. What a school counseling program does, again, traditional terms, guidance counselors, it's an integral component of our mission. This is a statement of the American School Counsel Association. The comprehensive programs are driven by student data, they're based on standards in academic, career, personal, social development, and may enhance the learning for all students. The national model ensures equitable access, identifies knowledge and skills from a social emotional perspective as a result of the K-12 program. It's a systemic program, it's based on data-driven decision-making, and it is provided by a state credential school counselor, so state certification is necessary. Why elementary school counselors? At the elementary years, we're developing knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary for kids to become healthy, competent, confident learners. A comprehensive developmental school counseling program, councils work as a team with school staff and parents to create a community, carry climate and atmosphere, providing education, prevention, early identification. These are some key roles here that are specific to school counselors in particular, not school psychologists, not social workers, not clinical social workers in our ESS program. There's also intervention involved. And really, their focus is on all kids. That's what's key here. Their training is based on that. Why at the elementary level? Masters level educators who are trained, deliver the counseling program. And this is where the, the national model comes from. There's three primary domains, academics, college and career readiness, personal, social, emotional growth. You will see this college and career piece take on a much larger role at the secondary level. You'll see this be almost an exclusive domain that we look at at the state elementary level, even the lower middle school level. So these three domains are addressed through these four approaches. What is a, a direct curriculum that is addressed through the classroom, through classroom instruction by a school counselor? Individual planning, which becomes a much more focused role at the secondary level. Responsive services, which are when kids have an issue, multiple kids have an issue, and we're going to address things responsibly in the moment, as a teaching moment. And then finally, system support. So what kind of systems do, do I create, provide, and, and deliver across a school, across the district, and provide support to all kids? So this is the theoretical model of the American School Counsel Association. What does this look like for an elementary school counselor? So right now, we have school counselors five through 12. We do not have one at the elementary level. We have school psychologists at each elementary school. We have a social worker shared. We don't have a youth and family services council at that level. We have our PAL program, which is our homegrown version of our ESS, okay, program, which is run by our staff members. We don't contract out those services. The void that's missing right now is kind of that proactive position for all kids, that tier one piece, which we have five through 12. So just some samples, you know, what does a counselor do at the elementary level? Obviously, it's all that relationship building, greeting kids, transitioning to now, especially for electing kids, the day-to-day parent concern, the day-to-day, you know, support with discipline or homework, and some of the other issues that kids face along the way. It definitely involves direct instruction in the classroom, ideally with a classroom teacher right there with you. So we're going to do a series of lessons on conflict resolution, okay? So the teacher's there to reinforce the language. The key part of the teaching is you time it so it matches where the kids are developmentally at that moment in time. So I'll give you an example. There's an age around six, seven, eight years old where you really want to give direct instruction with kids to appropriately identify feeling words, to give feeling words to their feelings instead of everything being nag, happy sad. So you want to help them develop vocabulary to identify their feelings. This is right in the school counselor's wheelhouse, okay? Another example, third grade, it's getting younger every year, but third grade, you start to notice some, some nuances in social groups with kids, maybe a little more conflict where it's not just we all were on the playground and kind of mishmash into a series of play and adjective and so forth. Suddenly, just around third grade, you notice some differences there. It's a good time to be teaching directly, how to make a friend, how to keep a friend, to run some friendship groups, to have, you know, lunch bunches around these topics. These are all in an effort to be proactive and get ahead of any conflicts. So this is in the wheelhouse of the elementary school counselor. It's not necessarily the training of a clinical psychologist, a clinical social worker, and so forth. They can do it, but this is right in the certification program of the school counselor. Specialty groups, as I said, social skill groups, friendship groups. It, it really gets at it before the problems start to get larger. But also, what else it look like? Observing, intervening, supporting students at recess, at lunch, in the classroom. Facilitating 504 meetings, obviously servicing is part of an IEP for special education students. Consultation and collaboration is another key role. This is one of your few faculty members who knows every kid and is responsible for every kid. So therefore collaborating with the administration, teachers, the specialist teachers, okay? Student may be having a hard time in some of your specialist classes, that's right in the wheelhouse to get a school counselor to help there with the nurse, support staff, particularly with behavior and social emotional issues. Providing individual and small group counseling to the whole school population as needed. So you are accessible to the whole school population in a proactive way. The benefits, it obviously adds the climate, it gets at the character ed, responsive classroom model that we use, the social education, anything around bully prevention, great lessons here, particularly the middle school level that are already implemented. Conflict resolution, which becomes a key skill to teach kids right at that time period where the friendships start to take on different features. Early identification of at-risk kids. Obviously, we have self-direction in our 21st century capacities. Transitions, connectedness, a nice support system for the administration, a lot of those low-level issues that really don't belong in the office with the principal, but sometimes are nowhere else for it to go, is a great place to support the principal. Some co-teaching and collaboration, particularly with that curriculum. And then the parent outreach. Sometimes this is a comfortable place for a parent to call as opposed to the administration at this level. Twenty-six states mandate it, you can see the list here. There's a good deal of research, American School Counsel Association did a lot of research on the effectiveness, the efficacy of the programs, and I can surely certainly share that interest in. In Connecticut, 206 public schools, districts, 58 have elementary schools with school counseling programs. About three-quarters of districts provide no school counseling services to K-6. Twenty-eight school districts, 28% of districts have elementary school counseling programs. Many of the councils provide services to multiple schools or less than full-time employees. And that is kind of what we're proposing as well, and we'll be sharing with the elementary schools here next year. The structure here, right now, just in a kind of graphical way, we have the entire department that's led by Jen Hawley. We have the program at Daniel Hand, we have Poulsen, and we have Brown. Two counselors at Poulsen for 423, two at Brown for 375, five for 1100 with the coordinator. The ratio that is actually recommended at the, at the farthest here is about 250 to one. The strength of our program now, we have a nice ratio. We're in that recommended ratio, adding that counselor at Brown in 2010 definitely helps. Services now are provided to all students, they're all state credential. We do have curriculum that, particularly at Brown and Poulsen, and then there are programs for high school that is documented, but it has not gone through board adoption process yet, which is going to be a key feature if we move forward with this. Very active in professional development at the building level in particular. We don't have counselors for the K-4 program, and a true developmental counseling program would add this at, at elementary level. And one part that I think would be tremendous is to have a point person for the responsive classroom model, to have somebody we can set up the training and truly be the point person for that model. So again, those are the two areas that we're looking at here, and the what are we providing for all kids, and particularly at tier one, and, have I did?
Of course I have to.
I was coughing away, so I tried to go as fast as I could. We went much more in depth.
So currently, the part-time social worker and the psychologist are doing some of those functions. I, from personal experience, like the lunch bunches definitely, some of the others, do we still need them in addition to a counselor?
Yeah, yeah, so, so really, and you're a school psychologist, so a good part of the training has to do with testing and that clinical part of it. It's not that it can't be done. What I do think we have done is we have taken positions and taken on roles that not necessarily are natural to the position. So we've done that out of need. So the roles here have been kind of picked up by other people, but a social worker going in to teach in a classroom, that's not what they're trained to do necessarily. Can they do it? Sure, but it really is not an appropriate match.
Right. So then what do we need the social worker for?
Social worker, so that's, so that's a good question. So all their roles are very different. So, you know, the school psychologist right now in our schools would, would be largely reliant on the testing features that they do, all those processes for testing and providing kind of clinical supports to students. The social worker has more of a systems approach, dealing with families, that's kind of their training, that type of counseling, and we keep that for those students, and sometimes they're IEP. And the counselors are much more of a, a broad all-purpose player to do a little bit of everything. They would not be necessarily working with students that are at the school psychologist and social worker level from a clinical perspective. They would be more classroom-based, whole-school-based. Those roles are a little more clearly defined.
And I would imagine helping other students in the general population to address differences in an appropriate way and to be good community members.
It's all contextual, you know, what are the issues? Are the issues around, you know, interpersonal skills, that are certain issues that are kind of surfacing that, you know, need to be addressed in a more proactive systemic way? So, yeah. But the roles are very, very different. They kind of got blended together here out of need, quite honestly, as opposed to by design.
So Tom, if, if the counselor were to identify a student in need, would a handoff be made to the social worker?
It depends on the nature of the case. You know, a real appropriate case for a counselor to handle maybe just some kind of daily bumps and rhymes, just kind of going through a rough patch. If it becomes patterned and something that might be in need of more intense kind of counseling sessions, it would be an appropriate, you know, referral in maybe the social worker. School psychologist plays that role to a degree now as well, but they have a big role when it comes to psychological testing that takes a lot of their time already. So that probably would be a social worker's role.
Tom, that, the ratio 250 to one, two questions, how long has that ratio been in place?
You know, it's funny because as, as long as I've been in the profession, it's been kind of that number, I think, which in today's day and age is a bit shocking.
So I guess the second question is that the one, 250 sends the one, is the one a guidance counselor or is the one could be, it's the guidance counselor, it's not the psychologist and the social worker?
That ratio, of course.
Yeah, it is, right now. And I think if you go back to probably the most important slide to consider among, so the academic piece, the academic planning, the career in college, and then the personal, social, emotional growth piece, these three domains are very specific to this area, this trainer, I'm sorry, this certification. You notice nothing in here is exclusive to counseling. So the name is a little bit of a misnomer here. There is counseling in there, but it's not necessarily just in a kind of therapeutic way. And the way it's done is through teaching and some individual work and some responsive work. So really, Kirk, this is what you were talking about, I would responding to student needs if I were an elementary school counselor, but I may be then referring out. But I'm responsive in a way as things emerge in the moment. And, you know, and right now, it could happen that the social worker takes it on right away, and premature could happen really, or it could go right to an administrator, which sometimes is very premature. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, turning on to the 2019, 2020 budget assumption.
Okay, so I won't belabor, you've already been handling it twice, I think. So the only thing I wanted to point out tonight is that we have had an internal assumption as an administrative team with the school closure coming, that our comprehensive budget, including the savings, would, would be below this year's budget. So I realize the last couple, we didn't put that in budget assumptions, but that was an internal assumption, a goal that we reached for. So we expect to bring a budget, including what's in the assumptions here, at least drafted right now until they're adopted, and, and have the overall budget be below what it is this year. So that's, that was our goal, but I, I remiss to say that I never stated that. It was just a goal of ours along the way, so.
Any discussion about the budget assumptions before we, I mean, will be another opportunity when we vote, but.
Hold the piece? Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay. Board number comments? Do you have any other?
I do not.
Okay, sorry. Board number comments? Okay, move on to the committee reports. Sorry.
It's okay.
Curriculum and student, I am covering. Curriculum, student.
No meetings, that's last board of meetings.
Communications. Communications met tonight, we have our next column ready. We were discussing our upcoming column, which will be posted at the end of December about the budget process, opportunities for public input and participation, just sort of an overview of the budget process, and what goes into that, including the budget assumptions and so on. The website for the Board of Ed newsletter and tab is up, it's also been sent out to via e-notify, Quiklink, so parents and folks are getting that information, and we'll be posting to that website on a monthly basis. Also doing some outreach to let people know about the communication committee and the outreach that we're doing, the publications that we have. The first outreach we did was on the work of the tri-board, the next one, which we posted this week, which is about the secondary curriculum at the high school, and then the following will be the budget, like I mentioned. In February, we will post something about the work of the board, basically what the Board of Education does and doesn't do, and how we work. So we're plugging right along on that. If anyone does have any comments or suggestions for future topics, the goal is really from the perspective of the board, we'd be most willing to make any suggestions. End of report. Thank you, Emily. Facilities.
All right, the facilities committee actually had an interregnum there where we did not have a meeting, so there's no report.
Finance committee. The finance committee also has not met under new leadership, it's on the schedule?
We're going to be meeting on the 12th, and we're going to be receiving the budget numbers as well as projections for enrollment and staffing.
We're running on schedule, Stacy with our budget calendar, correct?
Correct.
Personal committee.
Personal committee does have a report. We've had, in the month of November, we've engaged in two different mediations, one with the teachers on November 8th, as the board is already aware, and another separate mediation with the Teamsters on November 27th. The teachers mediation, I would say it came to a successful conclusion, resulted in a ratification by the teachers on November 18th, and will also be the subject of an agenda item on the 12th coming up. Teamsters mediation on November 27th did not conclude with a resolution, that matter is still ongoing.
Thank you, Tom. Policy committee, Greg is not here, but I believe he sent his report. Okay, me, I would love for you to read it. I know it was either you or who else, somebody else.
So there are three policies on the agenda for third reading. It's 61, 63.32 service animals, 51, 20.36 animals in schools, and 50, 60 registration for school. All three were, again, reviewed by the policy committee at the November 20th meeting, no changes have been made. On November 20th, we also reviewed 5113, student attendance, which has already had a second reading. I have decided not to move this forward, this is Greg speaking, I've decided not to move this forward for a third reading tonight as a minor adjustment was recommended by the administration after the meeting occurred. I wanted the committee to have a chance to review this adjustment before having a third reading and vote. Oh, and we will do so in December 18th, policy committee meeting. On November 20th, the committee unanimously approved the 2019-20 school calendar as presented by the administration, and it is before you tonight for consideration. Greg asks that the full board to consider two related items. After the calendar vote occurred, Laura Finn helpfully pointed out that October 8th, 2019, Board of Ed meeting coincides with the on-year four. Therefore, I'm requesting that the Board of Ed discuss adopting the calendar with the following modification, removing the Board of Ed meeting on October 8th, 2019, and October 22nd, 2019, and replacing them with a meeting on the 15th and the 29th, executively. This is the solution that would maintain at least two weeks between Board of Education meetings, including September and November. This is a recommendation only, and I welcome any solution that the Board of Ed finds to this scheduling conflict. If this solution is agreeable, someone can raise it as an amendment to the motion about the calendar later in the meeting. During our most recent policy committee meeting, we discussed having school break in March rather than in April. Given the many district changes occurring in the 2019-20, the committee agreed to begin the discussion for the 2020-2021 calendar process. This also affords us many more time to research this matter and gain feedback. The policy committee asks the Board of Ed to determine a process that we might undertake as a full board to gather feedback and research on this proposal while in advance of the 2020-21 calendar process. Finally, there are several policies that we'll begin reviewing at our December 18th policy committee meeting. We discussed several of these briefly at our last meeting. Two notes on these policies. 6145 graduation requirement was briefly reviewed. The policy committee has recommended that this policy be brought to the curriculum and student development committee as an information item before the policy committee takes any steps. Lastly, 4141, social networking was just approved by the Board of Ed earlier this year. However, the administration has presented a new version from Shipman-Goodwin that is more streamlined, more clearly addresses some of the concerns raised about the K version that we modified and adopted. Given the recent discussion and the adoption of 4141, the policy committee will consider whether we will request that this new version of 4141 be moved forward and weighed readings. More to come on this topic. End of report.
I have one other discussion point that came up after Greg sent that, which was brought up by Laura again. Thank you Laura for your critical eye, clearly not your first review or calendar, but the March 17 proposed meeting date is St. Patrick's Day, and Laura, in her history, has noticed lesser attendance from those Irish people.
Who was canceled?
Right, so I think the proposal would be, and it works out kind of nicely since there's an extra Tuesday in that month, to move, the amendment would include moving the March meetings to March 10th and 24th. So again, that will be considered as part of the amendment, when it comes up for a vote later in the meeting. And Lauren Leeson.
I had a 13.
Readings. Oh, it's not yet.
Yeah, I live in fear of missing that.
Oh, no. Oh, I live in fear. Sorry, Galen, I didn't mean to play you in the hot seat. Tri-board working group.
We had our first public forum, met at Ryerson School. Tom gave some context to start the meeting off, and then we presented to those in attendance eight criteria that we are using, utilizing to develop the options to the current maintenance and repair plan that has been discussed with the community. In any event, the topics, we're looking at facilities as a town asset, as providing multiple uses, supporting the 21st century learning environment, security, geography, transportation, costs, value and tax impact, size of school and buildings, and then there was a blank board, which was four topics that we didn't consider that someone in the community might bring to our attention. Is, and we got a tremendous response. Tom mentioned in one of his notes that there were over 80 people there. The boards that represented each of these criteria were filled with stickies. Wendy has done a yeoman's job at putting all of the information together. It's a stack of material about this thick that we're going to begin to digest at tomorrow morning's meeting. And looking at sort of the themes that came out, obviously and unsurprisingly, there was a concern about cost, surprise, surprise. But there was also, at the same time, a concern about not putting a mandate on buildings which are in a state of decay. And when Tom and I met with one of the town realty groups this morning, one of the brokers present said that if she is forced to take people around to visit a school, she will do so, but that more often than not, it's an embarrassment. So there seems to be a view about doing something other than maintaining and repairing, but with cost as a consideration. Security was an issue, surprise, not a surprise. And finally, transportation, because as enrollment has continued to decline, one of the possible options is to go through a core school print, and if that resulted in travel time greater than equal to, or greater than 40 minutes, it would be a real issue. So those were some of the highlights.
Just very quickly about the realtors meeting, so as an alternative, I had offered that something we had talked about in the past, is you could look at a one-day-a-month where our schools are available under supervision for visits, because it's really the programs and the people in our schools that are the greatest sell-to-sale, and the realtors agree to that as well. So, you know, driving by, you know, a 50-year, 60-year-old building is certainly not something that's going to work as an asset when you're trying to sell a home. But coming in and, you know, up with him on the spot, you meet Frank Henderson, you know, you meet Becky Frost, Catherine Carr, Kelly Scooter, you see some teachers, meet them, that's where we shine, where we're shy.
I mean, I'll add just from my perspective, but while there was a healthy mix of folks there who did express concern about cost, I think the greater weight regarding cost was articulated in favor of, you know, not being afraid to spend money, but doing it in a way that presents a value for the community. And some of the things you mentioned, like having new assets, having, you know, not throwing money into, you know, schools that are, you know, just going to be older at the end of the 10 years, and all of those things kind of came into that as well. And what, the way, first of all, Tom did a great job facilitating, and one of the things that Tom pointed out that the facility, the tri-board facilities working group has been working on is the concept of trade-offs, and how, you know, I think the community really came together around that concept that Tom introduced to the community at that meeting, that not everybody's going to be happy with everything, but when, you know, you have to consider changing things so that we have alternatives, you start to look at what you're trading, and we need to look at that realistically as a community.
Well, I mean, if you look at the, if you look at the criteria buckets, those will be combined, and Galen has done a lot of work on coming up with a methodology for combining the weightings of the various criteria in a way that is logic, in a way that is logically consistent in order to arrive at what the ultimate options that we present to the full tri-board will be. And of course, Seth, to your point, return on investment or value of dollar spent is going to be a key issue, of course. Stacy, we're going to be looking to you for help with implications at some point, we're not there yet, but in helping us assess what the implications for some of the options are with respect to the mill rate impact, because that will be, you know, a matter that, you know, that we'll have to present.
I just want to thank the tri-board. I was able to be there, it was a really exceptional and unique opportunity to see the three boards working together on a problem that really affects the whole town, and it was a lot of great work done, Galen and Kirk from our board, thank you, and Tom made a presentation too. It was really how things should work, it's really nice. And I know that it's just the first step, and you guys have a deadline in April, so there's a lot more to come.
Yeah, I hope we're finished before April.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I don't want to see this like drag on.
That'd be great, but no pleasure. I know you guys are working super hard every week with the meeting, so again, thank you.
Great job, thank you. Thank you. Do you have a quick one?
Oh, you were last.
Last time, yeah.
That's right, I'm so sorry. Okay, sorry, can we go back to Learn Leeson Report?
Yeah, sorry.
Seth has a recall.
Back in time, yeah, I'm sorry, I was the, I was the one who attended on November 8th.
My bad.
So yeah, there was a, I'm sorry, November 8th, there was a November 8th learn meeting. These meetings largely are internal, learn, organizational, you know, they do the same kind of things we do, like they approve the minutes from the prior meeting, they vote on policy recommendations and that sort of thing. They usually have at least one good presentation that they bring in from one of the districts in the learn catchment area. And so this particular meeting, they had a presentation by the New London superintendent, and she presented on the strategic plan that they have in New London. And it was interesting, what was most interesting to me is that when we talk about strategic plan in Madison, and when they talk about strategic plan in New London, how different they are, like the different things we're working on. For them, you know, they're trying to be a catchment school area and develop magnet schools, so they had a large portion of their strategic plan revolves around the configuration of magnet schools. That's something we would even think that, you know, included in the strategic plan at this point, and for that reason, we haven't included it in our strategic plan, but yeah, it was, it was interesting, so that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Audience response? Motion to, thank you, motion to approve a consent agenda?
Second?
Second? All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, sorry, discussion.
I had a couple of questions on some of the budget items, like it says that our unbudgeted.
Do you have it? Sorry, I just want to see if Stacy has it.
Our unbudgeted expense is all sold, like we've spent it all so far this, there's a few of them. We've spent it all so far this year, that's line 3,000. What, do you know what we? Page two of the budget expenditure report. So it's $75,000 is budgeted, but it's already gone, do you know what that is?
Sorry, page two for what?
The budget expenditure report.
Okay.
3,000, unbudgeted expense.
Yes, that is the amount that we contribute to our food service activity, so annually we commit funding from General Fund in order to submit, in order to help fund food service activities.
Right, I just don't remember it, it's gone so early.
Basically, that's a transfer over into that, into that fund to help fund the remainder of the year.
Okay.
So just because it's all spent now, it's until June 30th, it's not.
So it's accounted for?
That could be short, we just move the money over and we're done in order to support the activity for the food service.
Do we always move it over this early?
We do, yep.
Okay. And then my other two questions were, they were special ed, like the external And then my other two questions were, they were special ed, like the external placements and the extended year services were over our budget on those. Is that due to some unresolved?
I'm sorry, what page is that?
Page 4.
Yes, so those items are waiting for reimbursement from the state.
Okay.
So we just keep spending and hoping that we're going to get reimbursed based on what we were told we were getting reimbursed.
We get two payments from the state?
We do.
For excess cost?
We do.
I didn't know if that was any kind of legal, that we were waiting on some kind of resolution.
Yep.
Not that unwarranted.
This is very consistent. We do this every year, and we usually get the bulk of the money in there.
Okay.
Thank you. How's your ear?
Thank you.
One other thing for discussion. There was a donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Jeffrey School PTO to Jeffrey Elementary School to supplement field trips. Thank you very much. It's a great donation.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. So action item to approve removal of used books and equipment. So moved. One second.
Sure.
Second. If I have a discussion? A list of books are here, if anybody wants to look at it?
I just want to comment that our high school, not very many specials, Kevin State, is just remarkable, remarkable professional. He's headed to the Sierra Leone. That's where he is at. Part of the program with Yale, I believe.
Yeah.
Is he's bringing two boxes, 100 pounds of books with him to Sierra Leone.
Sierra Leone. I only know from the.
I could tell you were at that. I am. Looks like someone I know, Sierra Leone, on December 26th. So I'm pretty excited. Galen, you want to add to that?
Yeah, he's part of a really exciting program out of Yale, and it's a partnership between the United States, South Africa, and Sierra Leone. He's hoping that he can actually meet with teachers and see what needs the schools are. But I think that was asked at the, one of the board meetings, is, you know, how can we best use our books that we're disposing of? And he's happy to not take clothes and take books.
Yeah.
We're very grateful that Kevin's taken that on, so very pleased about that.
I prefer internet access, but in the meantime, the books will do.
Actually, I'm sure they would prefer.
Very excited.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Action item to approve the 2019, oh, sorry, I need a motion to approve the 2019-2020 budget assumptions.
So move.
One second.
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion.
Yes. Is the final version included in the fact?
It hasn't been changed. It's the same motion.
Well, at the last meeting, I requested that we add a bullet point to item 14, providing comprehensive, ongoing professional development.
It is in the fact, and I believe it's, yeah, it's the last bullet under number 14. We added it, social emotional development.
Is it before the meeting?
It's after.
After.
Is it? No.
It's the first action item except after the donation. We added it. We added a bullet under number 14. We pointed it out, and we added the social emotional development.
Before the curriculum?
There you go.
Right after the Jeffrey donation.
Say to the search process.
Okay. And thank you. Something else to do.
Any other discussion? One more baby?
Okay, that's in there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the proposed agreement between the Madison Board of Education and the Madison Education Association effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
So move. Second?
Yeah, you're right.
You're right.
Any discussion?
I think the negotiation team did a great job.
Yeah, I would, very quickly.
I think the teachers were also very. I think it was a good negotiation. Thank you.
It was a very good negotiation. I would echo Seth's thanks both to our members of our personnel committee, our representatives, commendation to the teachers. It was a, it was a good process. And as a particular note of thanks and commendation to Heather Dobson, after doing resources.
Yeah, sure.
She was extraordinary confidence facilitation of all these processes. We are very fortunate to have her. We all agree with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to adopt the revisions to the following curriculum. U.S. History, Grade 8, Writing, Unit 2, and Writing for Career in College. So moved. Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve award of RFP to Madison Music Center for the purchase of musical instruments. Just a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we see it on?
At some point?
Yes.
We thought.
Yeah, when did we do that?
Was that maybe that was?
Was it the last meeting?
No.
It was a while ago.
It was a while ago.
It was earlier. We went through the process. We posted it. We had a timeline. We went through the whole.
Okay. It was presented to the meeting. I was not very September, so that's a pop point.
It was definitely before the RFP process.
It's, um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
I don't see, because I have no idea about.
Sure, that's fine. Got that, Laura? Thank you. Motion carries. Yes. Let's see. I need a motion to approve policy 613, I'm sorry, 6163.32, Service Animals, and policy 5120.3.6, Animals in Schools. So moved. Thank you. Second? Okay, medic, thank you. Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve policy 5060, Registration for School.
So moved.
Second? Oh, no, thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion for the board to rescind its action on November 13, 2018, approving the minutes of its meeting on October 9, 2018, as amended.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 13, 2018 Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Kirk has to abstain. Sorry, you weren't here. Right? Is that right? You have his name here.
On November 13.
You weren't here. That was the one you had to skip out.
Yes, you're right. Sorry.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry. We missed you.
Yeah, that's right.
The, I need a motion to, for the board to approve the minutes of the October 23, 2018 Board of Education meeting, as such minutes were originally presented on October 23, 2018.
Katie, can you just, I'm sorry, can you just, I think you got the date wrong on the first one. Can you just say that one more time?
Yes. I need a motion for the board to approve the minutes of the October 9, 2018 Board of Education meeting, as such minutes were originally presented on October 23. Sorry.
So moved. Second?
Can you make a change in that?
It was in your pack.
Yes.
Um, one second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the 2019-2020 school year calendar as amended.
That's what we talked about. We had to.
Well, let's get a motion, and we can discuss. Motion?
But.
Oh, sorry.
I think I made a motion to amend.
Yeah.
The motion.
That was the request.
Okay, tell me how to do that.
Yeah, okay, so we, yeah, we need a friendly amendment. Greg said he would entertain a friendly amendment. To change the dates of the meetings in, what was it, October?
Okay, so Laura, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to say, I need you to read it back to me, so we all are hearing the same thing. I need a motion.
You want me to state the motion? Okay. So I move that we amend the current motion for the 2019-2020 calendar to change the meeting dates in October from.
And March.
What's that?
And March.
Well, okay, first, okay, October, the October meetings from October 8 and October 22, respectively, to October 15 and October 29, respectively, and then also to move the March dates to March 10 and March 24.
March 7. Yeah, just to amend the motion, just basically changing the dates.
Yeah.
From the March 10.
So.
March 10 is a Sunday.
No.
It is?
Yeah.
Are you looking at the right year?
There's two.
2019.
No, it's 2021. Oh, okay. No, it's a Sunday.
Okay, so now, the problem is that the motion on the calendar for today was not made by Greg. Greg said that he would, that he would accept what I just moved as a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the agenda. So we have to move.
Well, you made the motion.
You made the motion. So now we need a second.
Yeah.
Well, we need to, we don't need a second, because it came out of committee meeting.
No, we're not pressing.
Happy? And so, okay.
So first, we're voting to change what's on the original 1920 calendar.
We've discussed enough. Anybody else have discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, abstained, okay. Motion carries. So now we, a motion to approve, so that's going to be 20, and this will be 21. Okay. A motion to approve the 2019-2020 school year calendar.
So moved.
Second.
That doesn't have to be second, because that came out of committee.
All in, any discussion? That was your discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion, sorry, to approve the 2017-2018 request for special appropriation to replenish the external placements for Special Education Reserve Fund in the amount of $85,000.
So moved.
Sorry.
It doesn't need that big of a.
Oh, thank you.
Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Future agenda items, any old business, meetings and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to.
So moved.
Happy, second by Tom. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Um, all in.